Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, October the 3rd, 2016. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasure.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
And Ed Bell is unavailable this evening. Thank you, Board members. You have been presented a printed copy of the previous meeting minutes dated Monday, September the 19th, 2016. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections? I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
And I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. Approval of claims this evening, tonight, we have four pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $79,197.58. The floor is open for questions or comments.
And I have none, thank you.
No questions or comments? I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated October 3rd, 2016, in the amount of $79,197.58.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. We have no new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none, thank you.
There's no comments? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
I second, and the meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will convene Board of Public Works and Safety meeting in five minutes. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, October the 3rd, 2016. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasure.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
And Ed Bell is unavailable this evening for this evening's meeting. Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the previous meeting minutes dated Monday, September the 19th, 2016. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
If there's no questions, or comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have 40 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $1,346,170.7. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
No questions or comments? I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated October 3rd, 2016, in the amount
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Thank you. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. We have three items of new business, and the first being an agreement between Endot and the City of Beach Grove. Brad, do you want to comment on this real quickly?
So this is the, good evening, first of all. This is the community matching grant for paving with Endot that we spoke about. Once I put in the letter requesting the funds, that generated this contract that you see before you. Craig can probably comment on it, but it's a boilerplate, standard contract, and it does spell out the streets that we applied for. So part of the deal is that we complete these streets that we applied for. They will actually, like I mentioned before, I think, come out and visually inspect every street that's on that application, which is contained in the contract. So we will get 100% reimbursement if we can show that we paved the right streets. So that's just part of the deal. And if, for some reason, we were to use the money for something else, then it would be on us 100% local. We would have to give back a portion of what we receive, so.
Any questions from Board members? I want to defer, real quick, to the clerk to explain the money situation, as far as what we've come in this year already. And when Brad turns this in, we're going to get some more money, so. Did you want to comment on it?
Well, I'd just say that I think originally, we got like 600, I'm throwing ballpark figure out, 601,000, I believe. And 75% of that went into the paving fund, 25% into the general fund. And then, whatever we used to Endot, we get matching funds, provided everything's done properly. I was reading through this over the weekend, and I was shocked. I mean, they're very restrictive on this. I had some engineering fees that I was going to put into it, absolutely forbidden. You can be kicked out of the program for it. So it's things that we have to watch very closely and make sure that it is the right amount. But I believe the grant is for like $392,350, if I'm not mistaken. That's for the 2016 portion of it.
Come up for a minute, Brad.
Sure.
I want to go through this. I made this sheet up today to try to, to, hey, Brad, could you give one to Dave out there? So he could follow it? He's... To follow what's going on, what we're doing right now is we are paving Elmwood Court, 8th Avenue, between Churchman and Bell Fountain, 8th Avenue between Alton and Main, Shaft Street between Churchman and Bell Fountain, Bell Fountain from the dead end to Shaft, 15th Avenue from the Park Bridge to the alley south of Main, Mann Drive from the bridge to Churchman, around the Ball Diamond, the Park Drive to the Dog Park, and then Spencer Street, which is located behind Burger King. Those are the roads that we're doing right now. We cannot exceed 409,000 that we approved at the last meeting, or the meeting before, I don't remember. Next spring, and this, you see the asterisks there by the dollar amount? Okay, the ones that do not have asterisk on them, we are required by Endot to do, those are the roads that we approved in this, that they approved in this round. We have to do these roads. These other ones, we don't, not required by Endot. So that makes these roads eligible for the matching grant in the next round.
The last four, right? The last four?
The last four. So, and next spring, which, the $392,350 will come into play. And that's, once you give them this agreement, am I understanding right that they issued the city the check?
Correct. The full amount, yeah.
So we'll do 7th Avenue from Albany to Main, 7th Avenue from Buffalo to Albany, Alton Street patching from 3rd to 9th, 9th Avenue from Albany to Buffalo, 9th Avenue from Albany to Main Street, Churchman sidewalks. Now, this is not part of the Churchman sidewalk project from Endot. This is on the north side of Churchman, from Emerson to the fire station. And then Butler Avenue. So all of that will, and none of these road, well, these, all of these roads that are on this list have been approved by Endot to reconstruct. We have to do these roads. There's no getting out of it. So, and they'll come out, Brad, is that right?
Correct.
And inspect?
Mm-hmm.
And then we could turn around again and start the process over for, for getting more grant money from Endot, to do more roads. So here is, here is $859,000 in repaving and road reconstruction that was given to us by Endot, and we have less than $50,000 in the construction of all of this. So this is pretty good stuff. So tonight, what we want to do is, is we want to approve the local road and bridges matching grant agreement with Endot, and then Dan and I would have to sign it. And then, before I do that, I'll turn to City Legal for any comment.
No, it's their standard agreement. There's nothing in there. They set forth everything in Addendum A about what they're going to do, so. Nothing novel to this agreement.
Okay. So anything else, Brad?
No, and it isn't until we submit our final letter, and there's some other documents that they'll want, some contractor bid documents and things like that. You have up until then to spend the money, and so then we'll, at the end, when we've spent it and we're complete, we'll submit a letter saying that we're done, a few things along with that, and then we're eligible for round two.
Oh, thank you, Brad. So having said that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the local road and bridges matching grant agreement with the Indiana Department of Transportation.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This is how particular they are. They wanted it in blue ink. So I reminded Dan to make sure you bring that blue ink pen up with you tonight.
No, I'm not going to tell you when I was kind of up steps, Brad says, "You got a blue ink pen?" I says, "I forgot it." So I had to run down and get one. I said, "Dennis told me twice."
Here, Brad, if you want to approach. We're going to sign another one, just in case. And Dan, this will be our copy. All right. Yours is? Thank you. All right, thank you, Board. We'll move on to the next order of business, recommendation to fill full-time position due to retirement. Brad?
Dear Board, I just might recommend to the Board of Works that this city hires Steve Cole as a full-time worker at the Department of Public Works. This position will be classified as commercial driver with a bi-weekly salary of $1,741.23. Mr. Cole has worked at DPW part-time for the past year and exhibited an excellent attitude, work ethic, and attendance record. Mr. Cole will be filling the position vacated by Jerry Keen. Mr. Cole will serve a 90-day probationary period. If approved, Mr. Cole would be considered full-time, starting October 4th, 2016, and there's currently money in the sewage works budget to fund this position.
Thank you. Comments from Board members?
No comments.
No comments? I'll ask for a motion to approve the recommendation from the Public Works Director.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. We have one more order of business, recommendation to hire part-time.
Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board of Works that the city hire a part-time worker at the Department of Public Works. This hire would be to fill the position vacated by Steve Cole. The parameters of this position will be that it will make no more than $14 per hour and work no more than 29 hours a week. There is money in the MVH budget to fund this position.
Thank you. Comments from Board members?
None.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the recommendation from the Public Works Director to fill a vacant position.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Now, Brad, will you come before us to the next meeting?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad, could you send them salaries over to me?
Mm-hmm.
And when it takes effect? I've seen it said before.
Okay, will do.
All right, thank you. That concludes new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none, thank you.
If there's no other comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I second. The meeting is adjourned at 6:20 PM. We will convene the City Council meeting at 7:00 PM this evening. Thank you.
No, I'm not. Thanks.
Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting this evening. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Common Council meeting for Monday, October the 3rd, 2016. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Templin, Councilman-at-Large.
Jim Burress, Council-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, District 5. Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasure.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Elizabeth Lamping, District 1.
Chris Duffer, District 3.
Kevin Day, District 4.
And Counselor Bell is unavailable this evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This evening, we have a couple special presentations. The first one is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. So Chief, could you come up? And I'd like to read it into the record, please. Fire Prevention Week, October the 9th, 2016, to October the 15th, 2016. Whereas the City of Beach Grove is committed to ensuring that safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas fires a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas the United States Fire Department responded to 369,500 home fires in 2014, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, whereas all smoke alarms should be replaced at least once every 10 years, and whereas the age of a smoke alarm can be determined by the date of its manufacture, which is marked on the back of the smoke alarm, and whereas the 2016 Fire Prevention theme, "Don't wait, check the date, replace smoke alarms every 10 years," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of replacing the smoke alarms in their homes at least every 10 years, and to determine the age of their smoke alarms by checking the date of manufacture on the back of the alarm. So therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, do hereby proclaim October the 9th through the 15th, 2016, as Fire Prevention Week throughout our city. I urge all the people of Beach Grove to find out how old the smoke alarms are in their homes, to replace them if they are more than 10 years old, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Beach Grove's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2016, presented this evening to the Fire Chief. Chief?
Mayor and Council, I want to thank you very much for this proclamation this week. Fire Prevention Week is October 9th through the 15th of this year. Fire Prevention Week started in commemoration of the great Chicago Fire, which started October 8th, 1871. That fire burned out of control for over 36 hours. It left over 900,000 homeless. It burned over 2,000 acres, and 300 people perished in that fire. So I wanted to say thank you for this, this week. We're going to be going out, we're going to target the senior citizens. We're working with Stephanie, and we're going to go down and help the seniors check their smoke detectors and replace if needed. NFPA recommends smoke detectors are replaced every 10 years. So again, thank you. And most of all, I want to thank the shift, C-Shift that's on duty tonight, for coming up here. These guys, I can't brag enough upon our own firefighters that work for us. They're out there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. They do a very awesome job, and they're always doing the best for the city. This year, Dave Ansel, he's one of our operators down here. Dave's retiring. Next, his retirement date is next March, so this is his last Fire Prevention Week. I just want to say a special thanks to Dave for everything that he's done for the Beach Grove Fire Department. Dave helped implement the Community CPR in the eighth grade. It's a very huge program that goes on today. He's been a mentor for other firefighters. Randy Hadler has a CPR program now, who's taken that over for us, and we greatly appreciate all their hard work. So again, just want to thank these guys for everything they do, and thank you also.
Thank you, Chief.
Up next is the HUD grant closeout, and earlier this year, you folks approved a transfer of funds from the Rainy Day to a special account that the clerk set up to implement the HUD grant at the community center. This evening, we want to report to you that the HUD grant period is over. It ended September the 15th. You should have in your packet a spreadsheet that looks like this. These and all of the expenditures pursue them to the grant, and if you look, there are three items that have an asterisk by them. One is the HVAC, one is the physical fitness, and the other one is the electrical update. Those were required to be bid out due to their cost. And we conducted a bid process, and it's all on file. Everything else in that grant did not require, did not exceed the $10,000 mark, so we were not required to get more than one quote. But anyway, this is for your information only. The grant is over, and also in your packet should be an invitation to an open house on October the 27th at 1:00 PM at the community center. It's going to be a press conference and open house to talk about the at-risk youth program that the city schools and the city is working on for implementation in the next school year. So having said that, what I want to do is defer to the clerk to talk about the financial aspect of it, where we're at, how much money we spent, and if you have any questions. Dan?
Okay. First of all, I'd just like to congratulate the mayor and Debbie Springer from my office, who pretty much did this entire thing, as far as making sure everything was right. Out of $237,500, we spent all but about $300 and maybe $325, something like that. So this was done between 7/19 and the closing date, which was sometime the first week in October, so. But anyway, that was a great deal for the City of Beach Grove, and like I say, I'd just like to congratulate them for their hard work on that. But anyway, everything has been put back into the fund. We had two things that were on approval tonight at the Board of Works, which was approved. So we will be transferring this money back into the Rainy Day Fund with, by the end of the month. So at the next meeting, I'll report on that, but this was huge for Beach Grove.
Any comments from council members? And the building still has its original intent, banquet rooms and meeting rooms. So this is a good thing, and we invite you to come out on the 1 o'clock on October 27th for a little ceremony and press conference. If there's not any other questions, we'll move on. Under special presentations this evening, I didn't put this on there, but I did ask our city attorney to research a legal question concerning ordinances from the city county council that they pass, and what are our options as a city. This is pursuant to farm animals or poultry. So I want to defer, real quick, to the city attorney for comment. Craig?
Yeah, this has come up from time to time, ever since Indy adopted the new zoning ordinances. And the issue has become whether the City of Beach Grove or the excluded cities, whether it be Lawrence or Speedway or Southport, can enact more stringent ordinances. So in other words, the perfect example is the issue with chickens. Can the, Indianapolis, you can have 12. Under our ordinances, you can't have any. And what, the way we've fallen down on this, and I think correctly, is that the City of Beach Grove can enact more stringent ordinances. If you look at the, there's a statute, it's called the Home Rule Act. You can find it, IC 36-1-3. And that's where it states that a city or town can enact more stringent ordinances. So that's where we fall down on this. And again, I know it's come up through public comments and through some other issues. If a citizen would want to change the ordinances, let's say they want 12 chickens, or they want farm animals, they're going to do two things. Number one, they're going to convince the council to change our ordinances, or number two, petition our BZA and ask for a variance. So that's where we fall down on this.
So as of now, we, our compliance, our animal, humane officer could enforce the ordinance?
Correct. Our code enforcement folks can enforce our ordinances as they are written. If they're more stringent than Indianapolis, that's fine under the law.
Okay. Any questions for legal counsel? We have at least one person who would like to comment on this matter, so.
Yes, I would. This came to my attention.
Pam, will you state your name and your address, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. My name is Pam Stallard. I live at 711 Churchman Avenue, Beach Grove, 46107. Couple of meetings ago, I brought up the fact that I would like to have a pygmy goat, which is a mini-animal, as a pet. It was brought to my attention that I would have to do exactly as Mr. Wiley said. I would have to take our existing ordinance, alter it to what I was wanting to do, get one of our councilmen to sponsor that ordinance, and present it to the council. Immediately, I discovered there is a group in town who is wanting to change the ordinance to what Marion County is using, which would be standard... to what Marion County is using, which would be standard-sized animals for a food product and to slaughter in the city of Beech Grove. I have brought this to attention of Councilman Day, Councilman Duffer, and Councilman Templin, Mr. Day, because he is my councilman, the other two, because I've known them for about a hundred years, and they understand my way of thinking and how I operate. Each one of these gentlemen has said they would investigate. The situation got more and more confusing as time went on, so I decided I would just go straight to the horse's mouth, and I called the mayor. He, he was confused about my questioning of which ordinance we were using, and told me that he would turn it over to Mr. Wiley, who would investigate it and come up with an answer, which I believe he has given us this evening. Since I can't always get to meetings, I would like to have it on record with the council and on the minutes that while I would like to have a small animal as a pet, being a pygmy goat, I have no intentions of having this animal for lunch. It is going to be a pet only for as long as it lives. I personally cannot go along with the other group's idea that we should slaughter animals in our backyards in the city of Beech Grove. Since I might not be at other meetings, I want the entire council to be aware of my feelings on this. Chris, Kevin, and Buddy, I appreciate you spending the time and listening to me drone on about this, but I was truly confused, and I think Mr. Wiley has set us on the right track. I will in the future be submitting my alteration of the Beech Grove ordinance to attempt to give permission to have a pygmy goat as a pet only. Thank you very much.
Pam, have you considered going to the Board of Zoning Appeals first, as the mayor suggested?
Our board?
Our BZA.
I don't even know anything at all about our board.
You can, you can petition our Board of Zoning Appeals and ask for a variance.
Okay.
That may be easier, I don't know. I don't know, that's, those are your, so?
How do I contact the Board of Zoning?
The clerk treasurer, I'm sure, can give you the board members' names.
Oh, that would be great. Sure, I'll try.
The only issue with that, it costs you money. You can come to these gentlemen and lady without costing you any money, so it's just whichever.
It's not too much, is it? A hundred bucks, maybe?
Yeah.
It's real money, but?
I would prefer to talk to you people than spend my social security income on this thing.
How much is the goat gonna cost?
Last pygmy goat I had was thirty dollars.
Really?
Yes, sir. I understand you can buy one of those fainting goats today for a hundred and fifty, but I don't really need a goat that passes out, so I would prefer a...
Do they really pass out?
Yeah.
No, one that'll stay conscious at all times.
No, I mean, do the fainting ones, do they really pass out?
Yes, if you frighten them, they will boom, all over on their sides, unconscious.
You can get with Mr. Harrison later.
Wouldn't be for me, would it?
All right, thanks, Pam. Is there anybody else here tonight who would like to comment on this matter?
I used to, Pam, I did used to have that effect on women, though. They just passed right out. Not really.
Counsel, I think we have one more person who would like to address this matter.
Right. Ma'am, will you please state your name and your address?
Yes, sir. My name is Tammy Wadlington. I live at seventy-five South Tenth Avenue. My councilperson is not here today, but that's okay. I like the rest of you two just as well. I really just wanted to say thank you to everyone, the mayor, and, and those of you here who have taken the time to look into this and to consider my request that it, that it be looked at. What we were initially hoping to do was to address the council, but we were looking into whether that was even gonna be necessary with the new zoning laws and how that would affect Beech Grove. So since it has been confirmed that we do, you all can look forward to hearing from me, because I still would very much like to see it changed. I've looked over the Marion County ordinance, zoning laws, and I don't necessarily want, my, my initial thought of what would be good and healthy for our community isn't a hundred percent in line with that. So, you know, yes, but, to, to what Pam had to say. I didn't necessarily want that, but if that was what it was, then I was fine with that, too. You know, I, but I'll, I'll share with you more specifically, and I look forward to hearing your comments and perspectives and any concerns that you have about it, and I will share with you all of the research that I've done on how this will benefit our children, our families, and the overall health of our community and the environment here. I do know that that's something that the mayor has been concerned with, you know, taking on the clean city challenge, and there are a lot of ways that permaculture right here in the city will really help advance that. And so I hope that all of you all be supportive and be on board, and that we can come together to lift the ban within reasonable limits so that it will be appropriate for a city like ours. Anybody have a question?
You were in favor of having farm animals?
Absolutely, within reasonable limits. Obviously, we don't all live on ten-acre farms, so we have to take that into account, but yes.
Tammy and I have discussed my opposing views to the standard-sized animals and slaughter, and she and I have agreed that this could be my personal problem, that I am just hypersensitive to this type of thing, so.
Honestly, a lot of us who, who are city people, it's not comfortable for us to think about, you know, to think about animals as, as food. And, you know, my personal interest, as far as my family is concerned, I like a few laying hens and maybe some fiber animals, like mini sheep, a little baby doll sheep, which are no bigger than the pygmy goats, that can be used for spinning wool. I found that spinning wool is very good stress reliever, and I have six kids, so I think it's in everybody's benefit that I have a good stress reliever. But, but not necessarily in the, the slaughter, but that is something that's in the Marion County ordinance. They do address that some of these animals would be used for the, to feed someone's family, themselves and their family. And I, like I told Pam when we were speaking privately, I always try to err on the side of freedom, whether it may not be my personal desire to have animals for that purpose. If somebody else wants that, who am I to tell them not to? So I'm comfortable erring on the side of freedom, but I'm also very much negotiable on that, 'cause it doesn't really affect me personally, so.
Any questions for Tammy? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, guys.
Is there anybody who would like to speak that did not sign up? Okay, and that includes the normal sign-up counsel?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move to the minutes of the previous meeting. You have a printed copy. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections. Yes?
I missed it last week when Donald Trump got up to speak. I believe that may, that probably should say Don Webb, maybe?
That's absolutely correct, and I apologize for that. I think I was watching the debate, and Mr. Trump either said something smart or not so smart.
We're gonna make the RDC great again.
Well, I can assure you. One thing, Chris, if he would've been here, he would not, he would've definitely spoken favor of the race.
Now, that's all I had, other than never much.
What was your comment gonna be?
This last page and a half.
Of comments?
Was quite a bit of reading, but I plodded through it.
No other questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented with the one change.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. No public comments this evening. We'll go to committee reports. Our high school principal's here this evening for her report.
Good evening. Just a few things to highlight coming up. We have our Community Service Day in two weeks from Wednesday. I think that's the twenty-eighth. We have a fall break coming up, so students are, hopefully this evening, working diligently to get some last papers in for this grading period, so Bishop was not able to join us. We also, before we meet again, I'd like, just for planning purposes, to mention that we're hosting, we're having the Wizard of Oz. That's November tenth, eleventh, and twelfth at the high school, so we hope you can join us. Other than that, no news is good news. We are having a great year, and we're excited to enter the sectional for a lot of our athletic teams, so we wish them luck. Any questions? Sure.
Can you comment on the ban? The ban's really going good, and there's some ban people here this evening?
Yes. So we're coming off of a fourth-in-state victory from last year. They're always an absolute pleasure to watch, and I don't want to jinx us, but I will say that this year, it's gonna be worth it. So pay attention to what they're doing, because we're gonna, we're gonna go ways this year, so.
And today, speaking of farm animals, today I was invited to lunch at the high school, and I grabbed this pen, and it said, "Good local food." WWW dot this old farm.
Yeah, so we have a partnership with Chartwells. They run our cafeteria, and a new position that they created, our dietitian on staff, she does an amazing job trying to integrate some sort of dietary information for students in the classroom and through the cafeteria. So the students participated in a pennies war, and the senior class won, so they got to select the farm-to-table menu item today, and so the farm-to-table chef was there and was able to talk with the kids and kind of celebrate their winning of the penny war. So they, they enjoyed it, they really liked it, and it's really good application for the kids.
I want to thank you for being here. I was able to make it to the Performing Arts Open House, and the kids are just, it's so exciting to see them just running every direction, and we have Katie and James Cox and their mother here, and they're trying to sell candles to offset the cost of what it is to participate in the band, so, so it's always nice to have young folks here.
Yes, yes, we love them. And I did purchase the wax melts as well, so those are available, too. I know those are pretty popular.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't receive a report from the RDC for their last meeting. You have a copy of the ABC comments. Greenscape Commission report is on file as well. Financial report, Dan?
Good evening, councilors. The budget process is completed, and I want to thank the Budget Committee, which includes Councilors Duffer, Harrison, and Templin. They put in many hours communicating, questioning, and working this budget. It was especially beneficial having Councilor Duffer serve because of his expertise and being a former clerk treasurer. It also was very beneficial having the other two serve, because Councilor Harrison is a researcher, always looking for facts, and Councilor Templin is a negotiator and communicator. So they really worked well together, and the citizens of Beech Grove are the beneficiaries of that process. I also want to thank Mayor Buckley, department heads, the police and fire, and other employees for their input, and the entire council for passing the 2017 budget. It is a good budget, and I want to make sure that we, I want, and I want to make sure that we clarify that this budget, as with past budgets, does not increase taxes. At the city level, we don't do that. The tax dollars we receive are governed by the state and county laws, and we have to budget within those dollar amounts. Even when we seek additional appropriations, we have to prove that we have the additional funding for that. So I just wanted to make sure everyone is clear on that, as I have had several citizens question me on it. In September, we paid lease purchase payments on the following. The 2015 police cars, twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. We have begun the paperwork for the tax anticipation warrant, and I also have been in communication with Christian Duncan regarding the insurance for employees. The numbers are not available until after October thirty-first. We will be putting together an insurance committee very soon. On November first, we will begin purchasing our natural gas for all municipal buildings from Kinetrix. This will generate a fifteen percent savings to the city in natural gas costs. The city website continues to grow and is a great asset to the citizens and is a valuable resource to many. It still has not cost the taxpayers one penny since its inception. Thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt services, bank balances, agendas, minutes, and community events can be found on the website at www.beechgrove.com. Community events can be added free of charge by emailing me at the above address. The bank balance for the corporation account, which is the one we use most often, at the end of September, was four million fifty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. As always, if you have any questions, my door is always open. Thank you, respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, clerk treasurer. The only thing I would like to comment on is the Kinetrix. We were not supposed to do this until January the first, and I talked to them about a week and a half ago, and they were able to move the process up to Citizens Energy, and we're ready to go on November the first, which will just be more of an increase in savings by starting a couple months earlier.
All right, questions for the clerk? No, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Compliance Division, they're here this evening, would like to hear from them. Derek?
As you may know, we were out of commission for a little while with the server at the fire department being down. We got all that back up, all of our data's back, and I'm finally able to provide numbers again, since we're not doing everything by hand. For August, we were pretty busy. We had ninety-four addresses visited with violations found. Twenty of those addresses were repeat offenders, so at least the second time we've been there this year. We completed a hundred and fifty-four re-inspections, and of all that, a total of five homes ended up receiving a ticket. We reported three different addresses to the Marion County Board of Health for various health code violations. In addition, we tagged nine vehicles as being abandoned in the city, and of all those, none of them had to be towed in August. All of them were removed or taken care of by their own owners. We've really been, had a couple good months with upgrading ourselves technology-wise and vehicle-wise. We now inherited a Ford Explorer from DPW, as they replaced some of their vehicles. At the same time, we, we now have a Microsoft Surface tablet that's mounted in the vehicle. It can be taken out, so it's not left in there or anything. But nonetheless, this has allowed us to basically move our operation mobile. There's virtually nothing I can't do in that vehicle now that, that I used to have to do in the office. So everything is done out in the street, and that means a huge amount of time-saving. Instead of running back and forth all the time to do various things, I can check my emails, we can type up our violations, everything while out the road. So it saves a lot of time, also saves a lot of paper. We're probably gonna see about a fifty percent reduction in paper. So it's a really good thing for the department and for the city to be able to have this, this new technology. Any questions from, from the council?
I just wanted to say this is a good number when you see one fifty-four re-inspections that were completed and only five violations resulted in tickets, showing that whatever you guys do apparently is resolving a lot of problems without having a ticket, you know?
Yeah, in the past, it's been roughly ninety-seven percent are taken care of before we have to write a ticket. Later in the year, it starts, that number changes a little bit because people start to get out of, what's the word I'm looking for? The only people we're going back to are the people that are constantly trouble. By this time of the year, almost everything I write up, you'll see this in the, when we get the September numbers, virtually probably seventy-five percent of the people we write up are, are second offenses, or third, or fourth, or however many. Everyone's figured it out. They're mowing their grass, they're taking care of things. It's just those folks that don't seem to care.
Yeah, this just sends out a message that the ultimate goal is to get things in line.
Yeah, our goal's never been to find people, it's been to just get things fixed. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. Under ticketing, is, do you have a schedule as to what violation warrants, what price ticket? How does that work? I've never seen it.
Right, that's, it's in our ordinances. And each ordinance has its own violation setup or own schedule fee setup. The most common thing we write is for our nuisance ordinance. And the nuisance ordinance, which covers everything from tall grass to trash in your yard, things of that nature, the first offense in a year is $100, the second offense in a year is 250, and the third and future offenses is 2,500. Luckily, we have never had to go to 2,500. I've come down to the day before the problem was corrected, so it's out there in case we need to use that. Other offenses have different fees. We do have a schedule that we include with the ticket, so you can figure out how much you owe.
I know 7-Eleven, or not 7-Eleven, it's at other, one right next door to me with the grass situation has been a problem, but I think I've rectified that and I think you're going to be able to.
Yeah, that home was issued a citation and it seems to, ever since then, they've kept up on it.
I thought it was professional to me after Rick Sorensen took care of that. So the owners seem to be acting, seeing what you've done.
That's good, that's.
Excellent.
I don't like to have to resort to write the tickets, but sometimes that's what you do and then it solves problems in the future. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd just like to say Derrick and Mark have been excellent as far as helping the building permits and things like that. I know they've issued a couple $1,000 fines and they've got the attention of the contractors out there now. You must have your permits and so forth.
Right, back in May, it was a daily thing where I'd find 10, 12, 15 contractors working without permits. Now it's once a month, so the message has gotten out.
I got.
Sure.
I've had a couple being talking to me about the compliance office and the ones that told me, said, "Both of you guys are very professional, very, have good suggestions how they can handle their problem, if they're elderly or whatever," and I appreciate what you guys have done.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk about, very briefly, about license plates?
In regard to, oh, what we're looking at doing? Okay, Mayor asked me today about another update we're working on. We're working on jumping through the hoops to get permission from the Indiana Bureau of Motor Vehicles in order for us to be able to remotely check address information for the owner's license plates. This way, when we find a car that looks abandoned, instead of just slapping a sticker on the window and moving on our way, we'll be able to look up that license plate information, find out who owns that car. Hopefully, it's a house in the area, we can go knock on their door and try to work with them to get it resolved instead of just hoping that it goes away. So that'll help us move forward, especially when you see cars that aren't from around here and we wonder, "What is it doing here?" It's been here two weeks, it's registered in Bloomington. And we'll be able to hopefully keep more cars off our streets that are essentially abandoned. Any questions about that or anything else?
Yeah, can the, our police department help with locating the license plates or anything?
They could, but in order to do that, we would have to take the time of an officer. This will allow us to just do it directly ourselves without bothering them. Keeps an officer in service that would otherwise be out of service.
Possibly.
Right, you can do, we can do it all on that tablet in the vehicle, right.
I got one thing. So back in May, the State Bar Association asked me to come and speak about the city court and our compliance division, because a lot of smaller cities are starting to set up compliance divisions. And so I asked Derrick to come and speak and be my co-presenter and he did a great job. I mean, I got a lot of emails. In fact, after the presentation, they came to Derrick, not me. Everybody crowded around Derrick and had questions for him. He did a great job.
No, thank you.
I keep saying you're missing your calling.
Maybe one of these days you'll talk me into it.
All right.
And while we're on Compliance Day here, no, you and Mark, I was thinking of something here and has unrelated to do with the compliance job, but just as citizens of Beech Grove, your involvement in the Promoters Club and your volunteer efforts in that area, that not only do you go to work for the city, but you know, in your spare time, you do other things. So what a good group and what a good sign that tells everyone, you know?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any other questions for compliance?
I just didn't want the city attorney to have the last word.
Wake up, Mark.
Public safety report is on file with you folks. That concludes committee reports. Will go to unfinished business, carried over from the previous meeting. General Ordinance Number 18-2016 is up for approval on third and final reading. And at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 18-2016 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove pursuant to parking. Whereas the recent extension of Butler Avenue may raise concerns about increased traffic and whereas traffic overflow from Beech Grove High School at certain times of the day may impede normal traffic patterns and whereas semi-truck traffic and other normal neighborhood traffic shouldn't be restricted due to vehicle parking. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 78 parking schedules. Now therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires the following addition be inserted into Chapter 78 concerning prohibited parking. Add the following, Schedule 1, Parking Prohibited at All Times. Adelaide Street, between Butler, East to the Dead End, on both sides, Ordinance Number 18-2016. Butler Street, between Elmwood North to the High School Lot, both sides, Ordinance Number 18-2016. Park Emerson Street, between Emerson, East to Butler, both sides, Ordinance Number 18-2016. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances and no other ordinance. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, pro temp, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 18-2016 is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. reading. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 19-2016 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove pursuant to the installation of stop signs. Whereas new road improvements may cause traffic pattern changes and whereas drivers utilizing the new road may have problems viewing the stop traffic on Park Emerson Drive and whereas drivers may not be accustomed to southbound traffic exiting the high school property from Butler and whereas school buses and other large vehicles may have problems accessing roads due to added traffic. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires the following be added to Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances. Add the following, Chapter 77, Schedule 2, Through Streets and Stop Streets. For all streets from Emerson Avenue East, intersection Butler and Adelaide, controls and descriptions, stop sign westbound Adelaide at Butler, Butler at Park Emerson intersection, stop sign northbound Butler at Park Emerson, stop sign southbound Butler at Park Emerson, and stop sign at eastbound Park Emerson at Butler. Intersection feeder drive at Butler, the control of stop signs, eastbound feeder drive at Butler. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances and no other ordinance. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately upon passage by the common council, signed by the council president, pro temp, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Dan. General Ordinance Number 19-2016 is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 19.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote.
Counsel, I think you should have received a clean copy on that one.
General Ordinance Number 20-2016 is up for approval this evening on third and final reading. Before we start, I'll defer to the legal counsel. Any other comments on the social media policy?
No, not, no, it's ready to go.
Okay. I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 20-2016 is an ordinance that establishes and directed towards the establishment of, monitoring of, and including information to the general public concerning social media sites. Whereas it is important that the city inform citizens as to what is occurring, especially when it pertains to their personal safety, and whereas Facebook and other social media assist the city in solving crimes and whereas a recent lawsuit has caused the city to remove two Facebook sites, of which one was very useful in solving crimes and keeping citizens informed. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to establish a policy concerning the public's use of social media sites as follows. We welcome your comments, however, please note this is a moderated online discussion page and not a public forum. Furthermore, while we encourage debate and discussion, we respectfully request that the commentators be mindful that this is a family-friendly page and the comments and posts be courteous and civil. Comments or posts made by the public to any Facebook page under the control of the City of Beech Grove will be monitored and while they will not be removed based on their opinion or viewpoint, the city reserves the right to remove comments that include: comments unrelated to the purpose and topical scope of the page, obscenities, personal identifying information or sensitive personal information, incitement to imminent lawless action, speech presenting a grave and imminent threat, biting words, true threats, fraud, defamation, libel, slander, solicitations to commit or speech integral to criminal conduct, information that could reasonably compromise public safety, promotion or advertisement in favor of or in opposition to a political campaign or candidate, apparent spam, content posted by automatic software program, bots, information which may interfere or compromise current investigations, police tactics, and the safety of police staff and officers, copyrighted material if posted without the copyright holder's consent. The city may take steps to remove a comment if it falls within one of the foregoing categories. By posting or commenting, you agree to these terms of use. If a Facebook user's comment is removed, the moderator will notify the user by Facebook Messenger that the comment was removed and the reason for its removal. You participate at your own risk and recognize that by posting on this page, you are personally responsible for your comments and any information provided. The city disclaims liability for advertisements, videos, promoted content, or comments posted by visitors to this page. The responsibility for external content of comments rests solely with the organization or individuals providing them. Any inclusion or exclusion of content or comments does not imply endorsement or opposition by the City of Beech Grove or any of its employees or officers. For police department, fire department, Facebook pages, if you need police, fire, or EMS assistance for an emergency or to report a crime, please do not use these Facebook pages. For emergencies, call 911. For non-emergencies, call the Beech Grove Police Department or Beech Grove Fire Department at 782-4949, or dispatch at 327-3811. All persons that appear on this page as suspects or wanted individuals are innocent till proven guilty in a court of law. Therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires to establish an ordinance concerning the public's use of social media sites. Therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately upon passage by the common council, signed by the council president, pro temp, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thanks, Dan.
Mayor, a couple of comments. It's my understanding that City Hall's taking their page down, right? We don't have one at City Hall.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have police, fire, and I think the one, the Parks Department has one?
Yes.
And so we have three out there, that's the only three we have. The, this policy was implemented as part of a settlement with the American Civil Liberties Union to resolve the lawsuit. And there were some back and forth about what, what the content of our, of the ordinance should be. I don't think we necessarily reached a meeting of the minds. I mean, the ACLU is going to take a very extreme position. I gave a, I gave a hypothetical, what if somebody went on there and said that X person was a child molester? And their position is, no, that we shouldn't take it down. And I wholeheartedly disagree with that. I don't think you can go on there and defame people and do those types of things, but we're going to follow our policy. Have there been any issues, Chief, since we implemented the policy?
We don't have a page up.
You don't have, oh, it's not back up?
It's not up yet.
Oh, wow, okay, I thought you guys had it back up, okay.
The ordinance hasn't passed.
Okay, so once the ordinance passes. It's my understanding that the fire, there's been no controversy, some people have gotten on there and put real estate advertisements and those types of things, so nothing controversial. And of course, I haven't heard anything about the park, but this should get, this should resolve it. Hopefully, once we get this, once our pages go back up, there won't be any problems.
You should have received a clean copy of this because anywhere it said Facebook, it should be social media.
The clerk treasurer read Facebook, though. The one we signed, is that going to say social media?
Yes, because you amended it on second reading to say social media. So if you didn't get an updated one, I apologize for that.
There's five areas that, okay.
So we don't have a Twitter or anything like that, but in five years, who knows what'll be out there, right? It'll still be social media.
Social media, okay.
Um, I'm sorry?
Okay, then, on, whereas, there's is, is, so one of the is is just to go.
Where at?
On the, at the first page, where it says the first whereas.
Yeah. Whereas is is.
Uh, okay.
Then, yeah, the copy we have has social media page.
Mine says Facebook, isn't it?
It does?
Yep.
I will provide a clean copy that says social media. That's what was amended, yes?
I wanted to ask the city attorney, Craig, you said that this was an effort with the ACLU and they said, they And they said they wanted you to leave in something like, you know, Mr. X is a child molester. Did we just decide that we're not gonna do that because it, I mean, I, I agree with you. But it does say defamation or libel or slander, defamation, libel or slander.
Yeah, we left that in there. Um, defamation, libel and slander are not protected speech under the constitution. Um, the ACLU, this is when we were in the negotiation, negotiation stage going back and forth. That was one of the uh, that was one of the issues that, that was one hypotheticals I brought up. I said, so you're telling me, cause I, they said, you know, well, if somebody goes in there and, and engages in defamation and everything else, I said, no, we would take the position that that's just stay up, that's protected speech. I don't think so. I don't think somebody can go on there and defame people. Something that's clearly not true.
Right, but I, I agree with you.
So, we, I'm not, the pol, they, they signed off on the policy. Um, the ACLU council told me that if they have another problem, they're not gonna run to the courthouse. They're gonna contact me since we work with them. And we were, we were cordial and we tried to get this resolved without litigating the case. So if there is another issue, they will come to me and we will get it resolved. Now, if we don't reach a meeting of the minds on something, maybe not. I think that, that's a, that's an extreme hypothetical. Um, that again, they're gonna take the most radical position on something like this. I, I just don't think that's a form that somebody should be able to do that. Not that that was going on. That wasn't going on. That wasn't the issue.
Right.
It was just about, a matter of how we chalk the lines on, on moving forward or how we're gonna administer our pages.
But they're okay, the writing of this order.
They signed off on it, yes.
They signed off on it, okay.
Um, I had a suggestion and it's not to change this ordinance. I'll, I'll vote on this ordinance, but just for, and department heads taking care of their own departments, I think is fine. But I've seen where you can have in social media to where if someone makes a comment, it doesn't have to pop up. The departments themselves or the city themselves can look at that comment without anybody else seeing it. And then find out the validity in it and then put their things on to inform. Um, cause I'm still an advocate, the city of Beach Grove itself should have a Facebook page. It doesn't have to have people's comments popping up, but just to inform them of events. So I'm just gonna throw it out there for whatever it's worth. Like I say, I'm not here to, to change the ordinance, but just as a thought.
Craig, was, was part of the settlement that, that they agreed and we agreed that the city's page comes down?
Yes, I mean, well, well, we told them we wouldn't put it back up. I mean, here's the thing folks, the cost of, and time of administering these pages, that, that was one of the issues I'd raised with them as well, is that we're not gonna employ a full-time officer to sit in a computer screen and, and police these pages. You know, what should, what should stay up and what shouldn't. So that was one of the issues too, is um, you know, how do we put this out there without, you know, violating somebody's constitutional rights in, in the eyes of the ACLU, so. But to answer your question, yes, uh, we, I advised the ACLU council that we would not put back up the city page. It would just be the police, fire and the park, the parks department.
And then that is still to be decided by our departments then? Cause they might, after hearing this, are you?
It's at the sole discretion of the departments whether they wanna put a page or not. They don't, that's fine.
And then they'll have to police, I mean, you'll have to literally keep, I mean, make a decision of what.
It, it's my understanding that, 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 there's somebody who has been designated to periodically keep an eye on what's being, because again, I, my thing was, let's just take it down and get out of business and the chief tells me that there's been some crime solved and it's passing utility.
Dennis, just for clarification, I'd like to state this has nothing to do with the city website whatsoever. This was not involved in this at all.
Yeah, there's no, there's no back and forth on the city. You don't postings.
Right, no posting whatsoever except for by the administrator.
All right, having said all of this, uh, general ordinance number twenty two thousand thirteen, sixteen is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same sign. Please uh, register your vote and I'll provide a clean copy to all of you.
It says Facebook. This, this one says Facebook. I really don't wanna sign yes on this one.
Then don't sign it.
Okay.
What would, what will you have us do mayor?
Uh, I'll, I'll bring it to the November meeting.
Okay.
Okay. You wanna sign?
General ordinance number twenty-one two thousand sixteen is up for approval on second reading only this evening. And I'd ask you to please bring your binder with you. I'd also put a sheet out. You should have had a sheet that had a listing of some different pages. The reason I did that is, is because there's some very relevant portions of this uh, personnel manual that I wanna make sure that you are aware of. Uh, we're gonna hear it on second reading this evening and if it passes, we're not gonna hear it again until December. That way it'll give you more time to review it. But I just wanna make sure that all of you are aware of what's in this manual. And I could go down this list if you would like me to. Um. One of the comments that I would like to make is that and Buddy can, Councilor Templin and Councilor Brooks can, can relate to this. Uh, there's some changes that affect the employee who's been here twenty years and longer. Especially when it comes to vacation and sick day buyback. And these are, are good changes as far as I'm concerned, but I wanna make sure that you are aware of this. Uh, the vacation changes, the, the employee who has twenty years service receives five more days and then once they get to twenty-five years, they get an additional day each year, as long as they're employed. Currently, once they have twenty years on, there is no increase in any benefit for them. And permanent employees, full-time employees, their sick day buyback changes. It's now the same way as their pension is. It's based on fifty percent after twenty years and one day after six months. And you can, and, and you can earn up to unlimited. That was put in there. That was recommended by an employee who is not on the committee. And that's a deterrent to keep from taking sick days. We just had a gentleman retire who has thirty-five years on the job, has no sick days. And Buddy can relate to it, Jim can relate to it, I can relate to it because we all worked twenty-nine, thirty years. Once you get twenty years here, you don't get anything. There's no reward for, for continuing to be employed. And I, I'll open it up to these two, but I just think it's better with this, what we have in here.
Well, I think that any city employer, whether it be police, fire, DPW, full-time employee that puts in over twenty years, they should have some sort of reward for, for that and you know, like when I was, when I was, when I was, I just love my voice. When I was on the fire department, I again, no matter how many sick days I had, most I get was a hundred and eighty days and half of that. And if I, they would keep, kept track of my sick days, I'd have probably had close to, close to three hundred because I worked thirty days and I didn't miss. And a reward, an incentive for the guys not to use up their sick days. Cause every time a firefighter, a police officer, a sniper from BPW is all sick, it puts a burden on the people who are working and makes it for police officers and firefighters, makes it a lot safer when they're there than when they're not. They can give it some sort of incentive so that they won't come in when they have a hangnail or something, at least they'll come in and they can work.
I think it's a, a financial issue as well on the, on the good because when someone, we forget that when someone does call in sick, that it might cost, not every time, but it could cost time and a half to fill in for that person. So sometimes, uh, at the end of their career, uh, to give them back half, you might take a look at it and see a savings over those years because what they didn't take there could have cost time and a half. And the other thing, whether someone, someone just comes to work every day, they're gonna max out on their sick time. And here they are getting into their, that's used the word twenty-fifth year and gonna continue to work. Um, they don't get to add any more on and that means they go to work every day as a veteran and don't get to add any more on. And whether it's, they're gonna take them or not, uh, it to me seems like a good way to say, all right, you've maxed out on your sick time and you're gonna continue to work for the city of Beach Grove, why can't you still earn more? And I think that's a, a kind of a, a step in that direction to say you can earn more uh, for being around. And it kinda tells veterans that uh, just because you're old and can't move as quick, um, your experience and the time you give to the city is still important. Uh, you're already retired Jim.
But this, um, this, this personnel manual uh, talks about the application process and lateral transfers from one department to another, which we haven't had before. Uh, the hours of work, police and fire meals and, and nursing mother's policy, payroll documentation. We've, this was an ordinance that you folks passed earlier this year that we currently do. The calculation of extra duty compensation, payment of extra duty time, overtime documentation and comp time balance. These are ordinances that you passed earlier this year. Insurance, Dan and I sat down and talked about insurance. We've always provided insurance. We just never wrote it down. And this, long before we were here. Um, vacation, sick days. Earlier this year, uh, you guys brought up some concerns about sick day, sick day accumulation, payment and balance. That's all been addressed in this personnel manual. Maternity leave. The, the personnel manual calls for six weeks of paid maternity leave for a female employee. Both candidates for president, Trump and Clinton, along with the Speaker of the House, Paul Ryan, has said in the next session of Congress, they're going to bring up six weeks of maternity leave for females who are pregnant after birth, paid. And if the employer doesn't do it, the federal government is going to do it. So it's coming. Now whether we wanna do it or not, that's up to you folks, but it's coming. Um. Conflict of interest gifts. Uh, on page forty talks about smoking. We've never had a smoking policy. Uh, texting, social media, social network sites, pornography. We've never addressed pornography in municipal buildings. Retirement, death while under the scope of employment. For years, if an employee died in the line of duty, we issued them a check for six thousand dollars. That goes back forty years. But we never wrote it down. Now, uh, we wanna continue to do the same thing. The clerk and I talked about it, but maybe that should be ten thousand dollars instead of six thousand dollars. This isn't, this is just for immediate relief to a family of someone who's passed away while under the scope of employment. So these are the things that are in this manual. And I don't know if any of the city employees wanna talk about it. Paul, chief, chief? Give them a chance to just speak on it briefly.
Uh, thank you Mayor Buckley and thank you counsel. Um, yeah. He went through and broke down pretty much everything that I would wanna come up and say, but I did uh, some math sitting there and you guys met uh, Engineer Ansel a moment ago and a lot of you guys already know him. Thirty-three years uh, for the city of Beach Grove as a firefighter. Uh, and I calculated that out. That's twenty-four hours every three days, about a hundred and twenty shifts a year and that's ninety-five thousand hours that man has given to the city. So after twenty years, we're not, uh, you know, we're not awarding our guys for staying around and, you know, giving and contributing to the city anymore. So a lot of these changes in here go towards that and he mentioned also the funeral benefit. That also hits very home for us, you know, cause that's, that's a big thing. It's very important. Anyone who's been, you know, a, a, a death during the scope of duty is the biggest tragedy, you know, that we could have fall to us, but uh, that money goes a long way to setting things straight and, you know, a family's life that's just been turned upside down for someone who's given, you know, ninety-five thousand hours of their life to this place, so. I stand behind this. Uh, it's all a lot of good things. Um, and the, the financial impact is well worth the benefit that we're providing to our employees. Um, so thank you.
Mayor and counsel, um, I wanna thank you for taking a look at the employee manual. Um, how it helps us is it addresses everyday personnel problems and issues that we deal with. Um, and it sets it out on paper. It addresses social media. It addresses um, problems that might come up in the workplace. So those are good positives for us to have in the administrative side of um, the fire department. Um, not only does it tie in with our own policies, procedures, but it's blanket wide. It's, it's not like the fire department's doing something different than please. Where public works. So that's very good. Um, the vacation sick time's phenomenal. Um, like, you know, I can't say enough about what Jim Brooks said. Um, I, every time someone calls in sick, it impacts your day-to-day operations. Um, so this helped alleviate um, that impact and so if you have any questions on the handbook itself or um, anything how it impacts fire department, I'd be glad to answer those questions for you. Um, now or at a later date.
Uh, chief, one thing would be nice and it shouldn't hopefully necessarily deter us from this, but is to get a financial impact. That's just basically for the administration to kinda plan for these things, what could be the scenario money-wise, you know? But I know you're not gonna have to give that now, but it would be nice.
I'll get my calculator out.
Yeah, you can go back to the corner over there and start figuring.
Uh, twenty, when you're talking twenty-four hours overtime. Um, and if you have two people off sick the same day, two on vacation, then we're talking two people working overtime. That's a huge impact on the city.
I agree. And I was kinda referring to, cause that was one of the things I said a minute ago, was referring to the fact of basically the handbook, what additional it could cost uh, just for planning purposes. So, and I know that's something we're not gonna recall tonight, but gets us closer. We got until the first of the year to figure that out, so.
I got, this is both, for both departments and DPW and everything. I know that on the fire department, there's been no pornography on the station since before I came on. And uh, it was, was found, it was dealt with right then and there. And the smoking, there is probably about nineteen seventy-five. They said no more smoking in the station. Guys had to smoke outside. And they still, there's still some that will smoke outside, but it's a good deterrent for both police officers and firefighters, DPW not to smoke inside the building. And that was just a policy that the fire department made and I'm pretty sure that the police department had the same thing. And I stand behind that a hundred percent.
A lot of these no's could be some of your morale problems though, so.
And that's the beauty of this handbook is um, we're sitting down with the police and the fire and the public works and come together and a lot of these policies, one department or the other already had them on paper. Um, it was just implemented in citywide. So it's very, it was very interesting and uh, excellent. It's a board to sit on, so.
Hey chief, when you comment on this, could you also make a comment about Bill Tony, which you did put in your report test?
Yes, as far as the, the handbook, I think this plainly speaks out to the employees and administration what the city wants and how as a chief it can be applied. And as anything else, as time changes, I think the city can change the handbook with times. But right now this, this speaks greatly what we want and what we need. And to speak of Bill Tony, uh, I will say that the police department's lost three
And to speak of Bill Tony, uh, I will say that, uh, the police department's lost three officers in the line of duty. Bill was just this month, or actually last month, on the twenty-ninth, he was killed in the line of duty. The other ones were Tom Kleis and Richard Ferguson. So, uh, as far as the handbook, I, I hope that you approve it. And just remember that if changes are needed, that can be done, but this is good right now.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll open it up to, uh, council comments before we vote.
Well, I, I.
We haven't voted on the, read the ordinance.
Okay.
I got one question on the handbook. And Jim has the last original, which was what year?
Nineteen seventy-nine.
And they've, they've never done an update?
The last update was in, in July of ninety-five.
Yeah. It's not much different now, though, I don't think, is it?
About the same thing, this is seventy-nine.
I think I just recopied it or something.
Get a different cover on it.
I mean, shouldn't that be something that's reviewed every, like, four years or something?
Yes, uh, sooner than that. But what I, what I don't want you to have happen is, um, I don't want something tragic to happen, and then somebody comes to you and talks to you about it. That's not the time to try to figure out what benefit is afforded to an employee. So we have to get this in line, and, uh, hopefully it never, some of these things never take place. But now's the time to make the corrections, and now we're prepared if something terrible happens.
I have a question. On page ten, just to make sure, on the lateral transfers, and I believe, I'm sure I'm reading it correctly, but when somebody makes a lateral transfer, there's seniority in that department, but they don't know their benefits stay according to their year's service, correct?
Their benefits stay and their longevity stays.
Yes, everything.
They start at the bottom of the totem pole.
Okay, I just wanted, uh, and that's the way I read it, but I wanted to be sure. Okay, okay. So maybe we can think about getting the father of a new baby some time off, too.
I, uh, on a revising the handbook in the future, I think whether it be the DPW, Brad, or, or Mark, or Rob, or whoever's chief at that time, when something comes up and it comes up more frequently than normal, then that could be a time when they sit down and talk with the city attorney and, and the council about adding it to the, or changing something in the, in the book.
And I think what Jim says is a good point. Uh, a lot of things will always refer to the budget. It's never, I think, never too early to start that. I've, uh, been a while since I've dealt with budgets four years ago. And the earlier we start, the better it is for everybody. Well, that's the same thing with this information, is we, you know, I, I know, like, if the fire chief, police chief, or so on, just throughout the year comes up and talks about needs, necessities, and stuff, kind of jump ahead of the, you know, you hear it about four or five times, you believe it to be so. I know that, I, I know I'm laboring on, I'm kind of off the topic, but there's only seven of us. I'll say it again, it's a good time to just come up here and keep bringing things forward, for sure.
I know Dan and I, has, he's talked about wanting to sit down and talk about some of the things involving perf in this manual, which we can do, because we'll have a time period between now and December. So, uh, anyway, General Ordinance Number, is there any further questions or comments?
Chief, I was just going to say that, um, how the police chief, or fire chief said, the police chief could say it, and majority of our people who work for the city, as we know, overall have lousy hours and have huge responsibility. I mean, I go, I, you, there's no calling the police or the fire, they're it. They, they're on the scene, they're it. It's easy to watch it on TV, and as I said, sometimes the benefits and things like this, there are only one way of, uh, trying to give somebody a little bit part of a normal life that, and doesn't necessarily have it day-to-day with the hours and the type of job they have, so, uh, I just wanted to throw that in there for a moment.
General Ordinance Number Twenty-One, Two Thousand Sixteen, is up for approval on second reading only.
Uh, I will make a motion to read this by title only.
I'll second the motion.
We'll, uh, vote individually, beginning on my left.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record by title only.
General Ordinance Number Twenty-One, Twenty-Sixteen, is an ordinance that amends the entire Personnel Manual for the city of Beach Grove.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Twenty-One, Two Thousand Sixteen, is up for approval on second reading only. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. We will not hear this ordinance again until the December council meeting. We'll hear it on third and final reading. Thank you very much. That concludes unfinished business, carried over from the previous meeting. Under new business, we have one ordinance this evening. This ordinance, counsel, was brought forward by a group of, uh, businesspeople on Main Street and on Emerson that would like to start a Economic Development Commission. So they brought this forward, and I told them I would introduce it. Uh, this is part of that group called, uh, Next Stop Beach Grove. So, uh, at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read, uh, I don't know how long it is. I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record, please.
I'll make a motion to read it by title only.
I'll second that motion.
Been a motion to read by title only. We'll begin individually voting on my left.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to read it, the, into the record, on first reading by title only.
General Ordinance Number Twenty-Five, Twenty-Sixteen, is an ordinance creating a Department of Economic Development for the city of Beach Grove.
Thank you. The floor is open for any questions or comments before we vote.
I would just like to make, let everybody take the time to read this in full before the next meeting, and see what.
There is just one typo, do you want me to address it now, or?
Sure.
Okay, so on, uh, second page, number three, to be a member of the commission, an individual must either, uh, resident, it must be either, must e- either or either be, I'm not sure where the B goes, but we've got a, an individual must, what would it be, correct?
Either.
Either, okay. B, okay.
I encourage you to read this very carefully, because it affects you in a number of ways. Number one, you have an appointment on this. Plus, uh, this group is going to report to you, or every minute, every meeting they have, their minutes go to the clerk for filing. If they do any kind of business, they are to report it to you monthly. Um, and then this is, um, a group that the city will not be involved in. We will not have any, any to-do in this. This is something that's being done to, to, uh, bring development into the city. I applaud these business owners who want to do it. I just think we should accommodate them.
I would just like to say I would be very interested in being on the committee. Um, I, St. Francis being a lot in my district, and I've been, uh, keeping in touch and, uh, with lamping cleaners there, and then the new owners of the subway, and then I'm very passionate about the Next Stop Beach Grove, and I keep in communication with them, and I share their passion and their excitement. So I just wanted to put that out there, that I would be interested in serving on this committee.
Uh, we have read by, have we read it by title only, Dan?
Yes.
Okay, we're up for a vote. I ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number Twenty-Five, Two Thousand Sixteen, on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this at the November eighth, oh, November, is it eighth?
Oh, no.
Seventh council meeting.
Seven, yeah. Seventh, because eighth is election.
That concludes, um, new business this evening. Counsel comments beginning on my right. Kevin?
Chris? Um, wasn't expecting you to begin on this end. No, I guess I don't have anything either. Thank you, thank you for the folks that did come.
I just want to thank the young folks from the Beach Grove, from the band, uh, James and, and Katie Cox. They work very hard to be in the band, and I hope we can all support them and, uh, their, and maybe reach out to them and help them with their, uh, with their efforts to make money to support their band membership dues.
Uh, Dave?
Oh, I forgot, it was here. Uh, no comment, really.
Jim?
Thank you, all you diehards who stayed here.
Buddy?
I was going to share a piece on here, a public, uh, safety report that the chief turned in. It mentions about a home invasion suspect was caught by day shift while riding a bicycle. So there's a, a good piece of news, and also by the bicycle, so. Um, also want to thank the mayor and the city attorney on addressing the animal issue. Somebody comes forward like that, uh, you give them also an avenue on how to speak their mind a little stronger, whether it's, uh, with zoning or with the council. So I thought that was a, a real good thing. Uh, and then on this, I agree with Jim on the economic development, a lot of pros, but an awful lot of power within this group. And, uh, it's something to read and talk about in the future. That's all I have.
All right. A couple notes, counsel. Uh, this Saturday, October eighth, is, uh, St. Francis Walk to Remember. Uh, starts at Central and ends up in the City Park. October the tenth, uh, is, uh, leaf pickup begins, runs through the middle of December. Um, October the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, the, uh, MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, uh, will be conducting meetings at Hornet Park. Those are really good meetings to attend. Uh, October the fifteenth through the November the fifteenth is Latino Cultural Exchange Month in the city of Indianapolis. And a chance to attend a breakfast this morning, it was, uh, really, really nice. Um, October the tenth is Columbus Day. Uh, holidays, uh, will be closed, the administrative offices. Um, October the twenty-sixth, as, as the principal said, is Community Service Day. In your package, you should have had a form that I put in there to, uh, if you know of anybody who needs yard work done, you could turn that in to us, and we'll get it over to the school. Uh, the thirty-first of October, the Parks Department is having their annual, um, Halloween contest at the, uh, Elton Gishwiler Senior Center. And then in your packet, you should have had an, uh, invitation to the open house, uh, at Hornet Park on the twenty-seventh.
Will these reminders be on our webpage, these?
Uh, I have Dan and Beth put this on tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah, or all, everything that you said.
I didn't want to do it until I.
Okay.
Talk to you folks about it. And then, uh, November the eleventh is the Veterans Program out front at noon. And the next free shredding is, uh, November nineteenth. So there's quite a bit going on. So having said that, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-six P.M.